John, how was the race? Did you sit in all the rain, John?
No, it was twenty after eleven.
Did you get to sit in all that rain?
No.
No. Just being ordered, pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rookoff.
Percy.
Here.
Shipman.
Here.
Rechner.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Easter.
Not too much on the agenda, is there any comments on any agenda items? Okay, redevelopment authority, I want to update you on redevelopment authority, we had a meeting last Wednesday. There's approximately ten properties coming up, probably with the weather situation, probably going to be in May, maybe the end of April, something like that, some vacant properties and some homes that we're going to get listed together so you'll be able to, you know, advertise that to as many people as we can for the bidding procedure. I also do want to announce that they talked over, there's been some discussions, some meetings, I see Mr. Marshall here today, concerning that property that down there he has, there's two properties that are on the list. They are not going to pursue that since we don't have a plan how to take care of it, like the half-doubles type of thing, so that, whatever the city has done in the process of that Spruce Street property, the redevelopment authority voted to back off of that, withdraw it. So they will not even, they'll have it on the list at the bottom along with that property, I think it's 709 Edison Avenue. And to me, device some sort of a plan on how we can, you know, help people out. The first up at Edison Avenue wanted to be involved in the property, Mr. Marshall did not want to be involved, so, at some point in time they'll come up with a policy, when he has the policy, then we'll know how that's going to work and then we'll go back and see if those people are interested or not. But right now it's, I think, three or four empty lots and, like I say, five or six in that range of homes that are going to be up for bid and, we have a pretty good, pretty good listing of people that were at the last couple auctions, so we want to get that advertised and get out so everybody has a, you know, makes money for redevelopment authority and keep that moving, so it's a very successful meeting. And we're moving forward. New business, Jim, award phase three riverfront project.
Yes, that's with the ready rock. I don't have the documentation intro yet. I'd like to take and make a motion that we give you the authorization to sign it, once it does come in, was bid out. Bids come in roughly two weeks ago. Exact figure, I want it to come close to the destination, is three hundred ninety-four thousand. And that is to replace the roughly four hundred feet of the old WP wall with red rock. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Regina Russell. Councilman Easter, with the, this being the third phase, I guess, of the riverfront, I, I don't understand myself. Why do we continue to put money into these different phases when I think last year you were discussing how you wanted to do the repairs to the wall? And isn't the riverfront compared, I mean, I guess, considered the wall area?
First of all, I never talked about repairing it. I already, always talked about replacing because I had it repaired nineteen ninety-seven and failed again in two thousand eleven.
Okay, excuse me.
Phase three is a business called Phase Three, bid one and two, three is the next number, of course, but, that is the WP wall that protects our flood wall. So that it doesn't collapse and push flood to the lower section or the lower section of Sunbury, of course.
Okay, so that's what you were discussing last year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Easter.
Yes.
Once again, we go back to this business of the cost of repairing, of the cost of replacing. When you are the thirty-five thousand dollar grant awarded to repair the wall, originally after the flood damage.
Okay.
So why are we spending all this money on replacing it when a simple repair would suffice?
First of all, Mr. Lamb, the number thirty-five thousand was inaccurate. You couldn't repair the wall for thirty-five thousand, number one. Number two, that section was repaired nineteen ninety-seven. You think it's feasible to keep spending money every fifteen to twenty years to repair something that keeps failing?
Well, I think thirty-five grand every fifteen years is a lot cheaper than thirty grand to replace it.
You're not listening, I just told you that number is not accurate.
Well, how is it not accurate? That was the enemy corps.
No, it wasn't. No, it wasn't. That's what they were going to give us. That wasn't the cost to repair it.
They also said that that grant could be increased if the cost, the cost was more than that.
It was increased to fifty-two thousand.
So why not you take the grant and repair the wall?
One more time. It failed in nineteen ninety, it was repaired in ninety-seven, failed in two thousand eleven. We're going to correct the problem for the future. Because getting, number one, oh, number two, getting in there is a very tough situation because of all the other repair work and the money that was spent on phase two. When was the last time you were down there, sir?
About three, three, four months ago.
Okay. And you know the situation?
I've seen it, close, close up, yeah.
Okay, and you know how tough it is to getting equipment in and out of there?
Yeah, well, I, I can see it, it's not an easy place to get to.
Okay. So that's why I said the thirty-five thousand was an accurate number, it did increase to the fifty-two, that still won't make the repairs.
Well, have you got an estimate for the repairs?
No, because we made the decision with the municipal authority, which runs the drainage system. They agreed fixing the problem once and for all. This repair should take care of it, more than you and I have here on, I guarantee you that.
Are you convinced that's the case?
Pardon?
Are you convinced that's the case, it's going to take care of it permanently?
Yes. I know the repair won't work because it already failed once.
But I understood that the actual wall was damaged because of its hydraulic pressure from a failed drainage system behind the wall. So what, not also blow out the new wall as well?
No.
You're incorrect on that statement. Because the hydraulic, it had nothing to do with that.
Well, that's what the state office report.
Wait a second, no, there, there was some issues down there with hydraulic.
Right, but it wasn't what he's talking about with that wall. The wall was gone.
The army corps, the police report did say it was caused by hydraulic pressure from a failed drainage system.
And he said, okay, that's excellent. This new system takes care of that.
That's what I was asking you, yeah.
It's figured in there. The whole lower section, when that ready rock system was put in, hydraulic pressure was all figured in, okay? And we had no failures in two thousand eleven. Right north of that, the WP wall that we're referring to is the one where it failed.
Okay.
Questions?
Well, as I said, I think we're going home in circles here.
No, we're not, I mean, you may be, but we're not. We're fixing it properly.
Okay, that's such a good thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are not having the same crew who did the walls project already.
Pardon?
Same contractors.
Which walls you referring to?
They did the riverfront, front of the high-rise through there, they have the same contractors.
There was two contractors in that project. Phase one was Kinsley out of York, Pennsylvania. HRI was out of Bloomsburg and State College area.
Who's doing this one?
HRI. They worked in phase two. Phase one in front of high-rises, that you're referring to, the sidewalks and so forth?
That was Kinsley.
That was Kinsley.
No, on the other side of the wall is the dolphin stuff.
Yes.
Who did that?
HRI.
Okay. I watched you build the project. And I see a lot of things I liked, looking out my window when they built this project.
Okay, you helped me out, I'm not fault, I was there every day, so.
I didn't care for the work they did. I didn't care the way they did the work. I didn't like.
Now, help me out now, what you referring to?
All right, I seen them dump stones, an hour and a half later they come back and move the stones. And then move the blocks around. Then he bought a double-headed bulldozer over, just scratched dirt out of another one and took them back. Little things like that, I do, wow, it's giving me a bunch of stuff, that's all. That's all, I think it's a lot of.
But remember, it's a bid price, they can drive up and down there all day long, it doesn't cost us anymore.
Well, they're running their engines, they're using fuel there.
Yes, but that's their cost, not our cost incurred.
Replace sidewalks, Jim.
Jim Donkey, any of that grant money, would we still get any of that to use to, what you're talking about?
Help me out, Jim, you mean off the federal government?
Right.
We're working with them every day practically.
Okay.
And we're always looking for more grants.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, what did you thought to call for again? Motion?
Motion, yes, in a second.
I'll send you.
Thank you.
Shipman?
Here.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Chester Street project?
Chester Street project is being pushed back, bid out towards the end of the year. Municipal authority is concerned about some of the drainage issue which was addressed the other night at the meeting which we had with residents. So they have asked us to push that back and start construction in fifteen.
Does that mean Chester Street will close at all?
This year, yes. Next year, yes. And just to add to that also, Dave, Mr. Henry, myself, is going to be meeting with Citi cog. And I'm going to be sitting down at Penn dot and going over the highways that they have in the city of Sunbury and seeing the intersections where the traffic signals like march and forth, those areas there. See if we can get them to start doing the time work and during, if there's an intersection to be built. And what funding we'll put in the pot, see if we have opportunity to offer some grants for those intersections. You might whip the three, five years down the road, but at the start somewhere.
Yeah, get some equipment that works and we can replace light bulbs and things like that. All right, the municipal authority has three major projects, one, I know the transfer station is the one. I'm just trying to think of the charges, the other two are?
Flood project, which they have a million dollar grant that's down on the Silk Mill.
Right.
And then you have work out here at the water authority, putting domes on the clarifiers, I think.
I know they have three major.
I know they're spending, well, then they also have a problem with Cadiz Avenue. Reroute the drainage, we were discussing the town the other day. So I know they're spending two to three million dollars on other projects.
And another thing why this is going to be packed up a little bit, they want to scope all the lines coming down from that project and Chester Street to help increase the flow of your, of your stormwater and help eliminate the flooding. And they're looking at different avenues and different ways of looking at it, considering the size of the pipe and different things. It's going to take the project beyond the time we can get a bid and everything in time to make it happen. So we're going to fix everything correctly to the ground.
And also, they're going to start with this year to catch bases or handfuls, or twenty of them. And they're going to try to bring them up, back up to grade for a year, how they've sunk in. So they're just slow process with all these other processes, but they're going to try to get twenty of them this year. I talked about this spruce in front one.
Yeah.
That's going to be a major design thing here, but they're going to raise twenty catch bases third up the city this year, and let you out of the population just there.
We even talk about that front spruce, do you have anybody here from there or not, that's been one of the major issues for ever, ever now.
Major thing, you have to improve from one side of the street, it's going to be costly for that.
Please take a look at it.
That front spruce, I'm not sure we figured it out, when they're done, that catch base and they finish the curve in there, probably fifty feet of curve, forty-five, whatever they need. We can figure on the curve at that point.
We even curved my key with, maybe all the sidewalks.
Yeah, that big tree probably coming out of there too, so.
Okay, Dale, approve the pay invoices, general fund.
Yeah, we have.
And liquid fuel.
We have a hundred sixty-three thousand eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents for general fund expenses. And we have four thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents for expenses.
Is that emotional?
Second, thirty.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Easter? Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Open discussion. Anybody have discussion? Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
Just identify yourself.
Yes, sir. Regina Russell, community activist. Mr. Mayor, Council. First, I would like to, and I think that we all should, give our Chief of Police and his department congratulations on their handling of the ongoing Quaidless murder case. All right, that's it. Secondly, during the February tenth, twenty fourteen council meeting, I would like to revisit one of the complaints I made and deem it, it was deemed invalid, and I'd like to go over that. It was regarding a property on Walnut and South Fourth Street, being able to park two vehicles in a space and one vehicle extending halfway across the public sidewalk and blocking ease of exits in case of a fire or emergency evacuation. And I say that because any type of fire safety training that I've taken, it's always said that all exits should be accessible. And these two vehicles parked in a space that is now there and it wasn't there eight months ago is now making, you know, they're now, instead of parking one vehicle, they're parking two. And one is the tail of the vehicle is extending over the public sidewalk. This area is a designated hub, school zone that I live in. I've lived in this neighborhood for eight years now. So I know the property I'm talking about. Everyone here, I'm sure you've gone to school with the lady, I don't know, but whatever she was doing before, there were no parking violations before purchasing the house next door, building a bridge connecting both of the houses. And now instead of parking one van, there's a van and there's a car that's parked. It's usually different cars, it's like two or three different cars that are parked there occasionally. Again, I want to say that since I live on South Fourth Street in Walnut, the area is designated as a hub school zone for school bus transportation and student pedestrian traffic. The foot traffic has increased with the combining of the middle school into the high school. And I just found that out, so I don't know where I've been. I was asked when I left this meeting the last time, what was the person doing, where were they parking before they purchased the house next door? So that's the question I present to the code office. Also, why wasn't the owner advised to fill out an application to have a space reserved and a sign erected for persons with disabilities since the chief was brought in to say that he did go through the investigation with Councilman Rechner? And he felt compassion that the woman had three children in wheelchairs. So therefore, I guess she's still committed to do so without being asked to move that one vehicle. Currently and in the past, there is a second vehicle and a bus for maybe ten, twelve passengers parked on the street of South Fourth Street that no one complains about. We don't say anything because everyone in the neighborhood is compassionate about this person having forced the children as well as adopting some of them. Again, I'm asking for her if a sign or two signs can be erected for her because they do use the exit from the house on the corner of South Fourth and Walnut to access the van as well as the bus to transport the children with disabilities. And finally, I would like to ask, and I want to thank everyone for listening without any interruptions. Why do I have to fight so hard when I bring up my concerns to the council to get anything done? It seems like every time I bring up something, if I'm not insulted, disrespected, humiliated, told that my complaints are frivolous and have no merit, when they do, why is it so hard for me? And it's really hard for me not to say that it's because of the color of my skin. I hate to even go there. But I have to fight so hard for anything that I try to bring forth to everyone. And that goes with the audiences, I cited audiences, but you still fight me, you fight me. And I get it, I'm an outsider, you know, I'm not a member of the club. So therefore, we want new people to come to Sunbury, we want professional people to come to Sunbury, but we want you to come to our meetings and don't say anything, just shut up, don't speak out. Just listen, follow the signs of what we've been doing, because this is how we've been doing it all the time. Thank you for listening.
Let me give you two of the answers. First one, we'll start with.
I'm going to sit down and it's not out of disrespect.
We'll start with your last one first. First of all, there is no club. Second of all, everybody in this room is entitled to their opinion of the law. We enforce the law up here. So you might not agree with the way the law is written or how the law is enforced, but that's the way the law is, so just because we all don't agree on a certain thing, it goes by interpretation of the law, that's what we have lawyers for and that's what gets interpreted. So if you, if something is passed or something is done that you don't agree with, that's your opinion, that's good, but the law says here's how it gets enforced, so that's how it gets enforced.
I disagree with you, I'm not going to argue about it, I don't want to get into a verbal battle.
Okay. The second thing was. Yeah. Okay, now, what was your first question before you get into that again?
I was, I was.
If you're talking about a handicap sign.
Well, I know you're on that committee, you had it.
There's a procedure. She had, nobody, I'm not aware of anybody filling out an application, just come down to City Hall, get an application, have her filled out, turn it into it, then there's a regular procedure about it for how many, if there's any, if there's more than one on the block, how many people live in, there's a regular procedure go through, but I have not, you aware of any stuff? So just have you, or you can stop one, pick one up for or something like that, just get her to fill it out and we'll see if we can't get her handicap.
But I just, I bring that up because, like you said, you have these laws, you enforce the laws, you know what they are, you know, in any club. And why would that have not been mentioned to her since I've been calling and complaining for over eight months? And we have students that walk past this vehicle and they have to go around the vehicle into the incline, which forces them in the streets. That's definitely a safety hazard.
We're talking two definitions here, I mean, I understand that's not a problem because there's five-foot walkway, but I'm talking about the parking.
No, it's not.
Parking permits. If she wants that, it's not up to us to go to the, to the neighbors and ask them if they want one. It's a very simple procedure, just have her fill it out so we can see if she's eligible for one.
Sir, if you're called there, the code office is called there, and excuse me, chief, and the chief of police was there as well as the director of the code office, why wouldn't they, and I know you really can't answer this because you didn't do it, you delegated to someone to do this. So why wouldn't they have suggested to the person, listen, you need to have this done, that's all I'm saying. You need to have this done and we'll erect these signs up for you. And I don't want to, you know.
I wasn't there, right?
That sign does not guarantee anybody with a handicap placard can park in any hand.
No, sir, I beg to differ with you, I have all the regulations here. And I shouldn't have to go to these websites and do the research for everybody because everybody here should be very well aware of these regulations. Just like the fire chief is the, at the code office and he's a supervisor there. He should be able to say to the person, because FEMA has code regulations for people blocking exits so that there should always be ease to act to exiting any house in case of a fire or emergency evacuation.
You're talking about handicap parking, you're talking about.
It's just, I'm, I'm just saying that the, the chief was there.
Are you talking about the lady at three fifty-four?
Yes, yes.
She was perfectly happy, she was perfectly happy with her parking. The reason we didn't suggest a parking space in the street was, she's not agreed to park it. She didn't call us to complain about her parking issues.
No, that was me.
She was, that's correct, okay? She's perfectly happy with parking her cars in her driveway. We did raise the issue of people coming by and tapping on her car, she was okay with that. There's a ten-foot by fifteen-foot passageway where you can get a wheelchair through without going into the street. She was absolutely happy with just what she has there with her little section of, of it. She had no issue with that at all.
But again, I say, chief, everyone seems to be, everyone finds the gray area to fight me on. But you're not listening that the two vehicles that are parked there.
Regina, did you talk to her?
No, I don't have to talk to her.
Oh, we talked to her, okay?
But she's blocking two exit doors, sir, that's what I'm saying, is a fire.
She is partially blocking the sidewalk, but she's made a passageway which is wider than the sidewalk for people to get around of. It's a city, I've worked in cities for thirty-seven years.
Fire safety for people with disabilities, sir, it says differently.
Everything is a little bit different. We didn't suggest that, so she was perfectly happy with what she wanted. Now, if you talked to her and you're representing her.
No, I'm not representing her.
That would be a different.
I'm complaining and representing the neighbors in my community that wants to know, why is she able to get away with this? And I certainly ask that because for a whole year, I was banged in the head, constantly thrown in my face how Councilman Easter's tenant could park in front of the garage as long as he left five feet of public sidewalk. And this lady is permitted to have her, the tail of her vehicle extended over the public sidewalk in a school safety zone? And if she has.
Because three handicap people in there, she does have a passageway around there. Where, where the sidewalk in the public stops, okay, and she blocks it. I'll bring it, she blocks it, she has a passageway around there that I believe you could get one or maybe even two handicap wheelchairs through there. Now, if she didn't have three handicap people in there, I might have said to her, okay, look, you got to find someplace else to go. But in a case like that where there's three handicap people, going back to the Sumerians, the Hammurabi code for three thousand years ago, the weak, the sick and the old have been granted privileges by a civilization. Now, I've done this a long time, I am not going to pick on a lady that's got three handicap people because a neighbor decides that's a problem. If she's happy with it, she's happy with it, let it go.
Well, I love that about, I love that about Sunbury is that no matter what federal laws are in effect, that we can't overlook things.
Or the laws are state regulations.
Well, sir, like I said, FEMA has reviewed and they have, as a US Fire Administration since July nineteen, twenty thirteen, it addresses this. But I don't want to get into, like I said, a verbal battle with anyone because Sunbury has the city on lockdown. They're going to run the city any way they want to, whether it violates any federal code or not. This building is an example because the bathroom here on this floor is not, it doesn't have a handicap stall in it. So that's just one of the things that you can avoid.
The handicapped restroom right back there, we just had it put in a couple of years ago.
Well, thank you, Terry. I didn't know that you were the council.
I'm not, believe me, I'm not.
There's two things I'd like to say. The first thing is, we would like the same respect that you want when we're talking and not be interrupted. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
We didn't interrupt you at all.
And I appreciate that, thank you so much.
So we would appreciate the same thing, okay? Secondly, chief, I have a handicap plaque. If I went out and parked at Fourth and Walnut in that handicap placard, in that handicap zone, am I going to get arrested?
No.
No, I'm not, because it doesn't say that's Regina Russell's handicap or Chief Mazzio's handicap zone. It is a handicap parking for anybody that has, that has a handicap plaque. So if he wanted to take his vehicle down there and park it for a year as long as it was legally inspected and had that done, or he went out to move it, right?
Correct.
As long as it was legally, street legal and inspected and right, because I have affirmative handicap plaque.
Yeah, I think, no, because that's funny, the Bureau of Motor Vehicles, when they give you the important information for the disability placard and the erection of signs, says totally different.
You have a handicap placard that you're entitled to use at any handicap parking spot.
Sir. I, like I said, I can't argue, I don't want to argue with you.
Yeah, we're not arguing about a handicap spot that nobody even applied for yet.
If anyone, you know, all you have to do is go to a website and look up what the rules and regulations are. And again, like I said, whatever, whatever issue or topic I bring up seems to be a big fight.
Well, that's not true, but can you just tell me the address of this place?
Three fifty-four.
Walnut.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mike has a motion you need to bring up?
I do.
Then we'll go back, if anybody has any comment.
Uh, this is under your category of new business and this has to do with the bank financing that you had in place. Kevin was able to negotiate a new rate for you through, with, with National Bank. I could read the motion that someone could make or I could pass it down because, Jim, this involves a loan we did in two thousand ten, if you want to read it.
Just want to read off, Michael, I'll read it.
Thank you. So what I'll read off is, and let me tell you the result before I bore you with the reading. The fixed rate that you're paying currently is four point one eight percent. It will be reduced down to two point four percent. So with that in mind, I'll read the motion. I make a motion to approve the modification of the general obligation note, series A of two thousand ten. The modification would result in a fixed interest rate of two point four percent payable through January fifteen, two thousand twenty. Terry, for your benefit, I have this written out, you don't have to keep up. The balance of the loan payable after January fifteen, two thousand twenty The balance of the loan payable after January fifteen, two thousand twenty, will be paid at an adjusted rate of interest pursuant to the terms of the note sent forth in general obligation note, series A of two thousand ten. The mayor, city treasurer and city clerk show the authority to sign all documents to implement this motion. The terms would be effective February twenty-four, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you, Michael. I make that formal motion to reduce. Reduce the rate of our line of credit.
You're already locked in with Northumberland Bank to accomplish this.
Oh, okay, so we're not changing the bank term? Nope, okay.
No, we just really brought it down to two point four, which is a real good rate. We had a good rate, four one, but this is better yet. It's in two thousand twenty, so we have.
Common sense. This will be a motion?
Yeah.
Jim, you have a second?
Henry?
Yes.
Reister?
Yes.
Persing?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Anything else?
Tip.
That was simple enough.
Thank you.
I'm sorry if it interrupted any other public discussion?
Me.
Yes, ma'am?
Just wanted to tell everybody.
Just give your name loud for the microphone. I'm sorry.
Lori Johnson. I just wanted to tell everybody that the Mardi Gras is still on this week, Saturday night. We have everything under control, hopefully. There's eight places that are participating. And if you see some strange guy dressed up in a costume, that'll be Tommy Sowers, walks around to every place and visits every place between the hours of nine and twelve. It's bright red. You can't miss him. And he has a great time. We just walk around town and see everybody. So if you see him, wave. We'll be out there.
Thank you. Nine to twelve, you say?
Nine to twelve, we'll be walking.
I gotta say, we're having a real quick, I'd like to thank Dale and the street department and everybody else, Mike, that was involved in clearing the streets. I think they did a great job and I think they went above and beyond. I know I helped a little bit up in, up in Fifth Ward and we, we stayed there. We just didn't make one swipe and go through. We drove around and drove around until we got things cleaned up and then we moved to another section of town. But I think, and we've done that without, without going to any outside help. Municipal Authority and City of Sunbury did a hell of a job, I think, getting the snow off the streets this time around.
Or if you're where I called for help.
Yes, and everybody that parked where it helped, that's what I'm saying. And it was, it was a complete effort of all departments within the city. And it wasn't, there was no outside, no outside money spent or outside contractors coming in hauling snow or removing snow or anything like that. It was all done between the City of Sunbury and the Sunbury Municipal Authority.
And to say, if you think back twenty-five years ago, and some guys have been here nearly that long, but we used to budget a hundred thousand dollars for snow removal. Back when we used to get snow all the time. Well, of course, throughout the years, not just the City of Sunbury, but also cities, you don't budget that anymore. So when you have something like this, I thank the Lord that we had the municipal authority and their equipment clear. That's where we saved the money without. We used to rent a lot of trucks and a lot of front loaders to move this stuff and they saved us a ton of money and I agree and I support that a hundred percent.
Different shifts worked around the clock. The snow removal, snowbound, and so.
We'll hope it's another twenty years together.
Absolutely.
Well, we said just shy, I think it was nineteen sixteen or somewhere is the record that we were looking to beat in February. So it's been almost a hundred years since we had that much snow in February.
Nineteen fourteen.
Fourteen?
Nineteen fourteen.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's close. Twenty-seven, twenty-nine inches.
That's true.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say something to Dale, Fifth Ward, that's down there. Uh, they did a fairly decent job removing the snow. Probably.